And Commissioner Quivell is absent, Commissioner Gill is absent, Commissioner Buck?
Present.
Yeah, that is roll call.
Thank you. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until your call to provide public testimony. During the Planning Commission regular session at 7:00 PM, we will have business from the audience, which is a time for anyone to speak to the Planning Commission on any subject not otherwise on our agenda for a hearing this evening.
And there are no hearings this evening. Well, that was my error in the script. So on any other topic.
Yes, so we will not be having a regular session this evening. Thank you for that clarification.
We do have a regular session. We don't have any other hearings. So business from the audience during the regular session would be on any topic. We don't have anyone attendance right now, so.
Well, thank, yeah, thanks for that clarification, Christina. All right, and without further ado, we'll bring the first agenda item of landing the land use planning overview with Monica.
Thank you, Commissioner Salazar. Sorry about that. Can everybody hear me? Okay. Okay, thank you. And good evening, Commissioners. This training focuses on a connection to all that goes into why and how Springfield, like other cities in Oregon, does its local planning framework in alignment with what the state requires and the direction they give us, but also with their own needs in mind. We wanted to touch on that in the recorded presentation. One of those planning requirements is to put comprehensive plans in place. And so staff thought this would be a really good time to do an information share on where we are with our overall comprehensive planning framework, just as one of the topics for this evening. I don't have too much to add to the recorded presentation. Other than that, you may have noticed at the end, we identified ways people can stay informed about Springfield's planning activities or even get more involved, particularly with the Planning Commission, noting some vacancies coming up. And that we're in process right now for a couple positions. We actually intended this presentation to be useful to a variety of audiences. And I've already sent this to our advisory groups for that comprehensive plan map clarification project. And lastly, I'd say just a couple points that I think are worth emphasizing, especially as it relates to what Planning Commission should consider when making land use decisions. But I would love to hear what your thoughts or questions are first, in case there's an opportunity to speak to those points as part of our discussion. So just at this point, I'd say, does anybody have anything to share or add based on the presentation?
Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. I just wanted to share that. I really appreciated the presentation. I think it will work really well, especially going forward. As we have Commissioners come and go, I think it's really great information, a lot of information packed into that presentation. And so I do appreciate that. I've already watched it a couple of times, as I know that I've missed a couple of bits on the first time. And I'm sure I'll watch it plenty more times again, but I think it's really good, especially if we have community members that are really interested in the process, but don't really know how to get started or what it's all about. I think that really did a great job of outlining where, what's important and what our role is and how we get there. So I really appreciated the time that was spent in getting that together. Thank you for that.
Thank you. And I'll say I've listened to it multiple times myself and always seem to have a highlight that pops into my mind. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I'll also echo that it's a great presentation, lots of information packed into it. And yeah, it's definitely a great overview for both us as Commissioners and also for the public at large as well. And I'm just wondering if, I guess, yeah, how do I want to frame this question? As the state seems to be coming, getting more involved and more active in the in land use planning and I think becoming taking more of the reins, so to speak, in inland use planning. I'm wondering if that impacts in any way that, or in what ways the state becoming more active in land use planning and decision making and rulemaking impacts that kind of layer cake, as it were, of the state and that flowing down to to local decision making. Does that make, question make sense?
Yep, I think that's a great observation. Also, I would say we've always had direction, but that particular direction, and I'm wondering if you're referring to the climate friendly and equitable communities as you say that, okay. I can think of one chapter where we're going to have to be working very closely on or element, if you will, in our comprehensive plan. That would be the transportation section. So that's one specific topic, but it does seem very broad. And its rules, I won't say I'm the expert in that project. So I haven't seen Christina pop up, who could speak more to the project overall, but transportation is one we might have to touch. Land use in particular is a new chapter we'd like to add to our comprehensive plan. As mentioned in that recording, we had the comprehensive plant map clarification project. So that'll become a map related to that chapter, and then we'll have text. I'm curious to see what will unfold there as well. That project or effort by the state in particular, it does add more specificity than I'd say we're used to because before we had a lot of guidance and methods for how to expand an urban growth boundary or how to assess your population needs. So housing, for example, or economic development, but I'd say less about the goals or policies we'd have to put in place. This, I think, may have more of that. So I'd say open it up to Christine or Sandy, though, to speak more about content there.
I think on the, it's a great question, particularly as relates to climate friendly and equitable communities rules. And I think that's actually one of the critiques that the cities that are dissatisfied with the process have with the rulemaking process is that it didn't honor the legislative direction for the state to set the general framework, goals and guidelines, and then leave it to local governments to determine the specific implementation for how to get there. The legislature has stepped in and said, you're going to do these specific things, particularly in the areas of housing. But this is the climate friendly and equitable communities rules is an area where there was no legislative direction and the state agency developed that detailed rulemaking on their own. So what I'll say is I think that's a very good question that we're also asking the state right now and more to come on on that probably.
That all you touched on the development code update project there in your answer, Christina, with housing in particular. So thank you.
Yeah, thanks to you both. I, yeah, kind of wanted to seed that question because I know that that will be coming before us a lot in the in the coming months and in the future.
Couple of points I'd like to make if there aren't any more questions or just those highlights that I've taken away. And as we've really tried to think about as a team here at the staff level, so I wasn't sure if there were more more thoughts or questions.
Commissioner Buck?
Thank you, Chair. I, I think for me, this raises lots of questions and lots of thoughts. I mean, I, I think it's not that I don't have any, it's just I'm not at a place quite yet where I'm sure where, what to tackle, because I feel like, it's like, okay, there's all this information. And as Commissioner Salazar or Chair Salazar brought up, it's, it seems like the state is dictating more and more in a variety of areas and and just what options are going to be available as we go forward. So I just wanted to put that out there. That's kind of where my head's at with this is having watched the video once, I you know, need to go back and watch it probably multiple times because I came away thinking, huh, okay. So that's where I'm at with it. I just wanted to put that out there, Monica, that it's not that I don't have any questions. I'm just not sure. I'm quite there yet to kind of start talking through them. So I'm hoping that as you bring up your points and things like that, it's going to help orient me a little bit better.
Thank you. I don't have any slides to share. But yeah, we are at a pivotal moment and just practice of planning, I would say. So there is a lot to think about, like what was, what is, what will be. So I didn't have a lot to say about the statewide planning framework. But in terms of what we do locally or regionally, just emphasizing a couple things here. So one is the, I guess, beauty of a refinement plan or neighborhood refinement plan. We have our new overall comprehensive plan, which was and still kind of is that metro plan. We're developing and have started to our Springfield specific comprehensive plan. So not bringing Eugene or some outlying areas next to the county as much. So just think about neighborhood refinement plans as unique and special. And then related to that metro plan, Springfield comprehensive plan tie. As you think about whether, say, a zone change comes in or some other land use application that has to demonstrate consistency with the comprehensive plan or the metro plan. We, through the years and doing piece by piece work to put a comprehensive plan together, have a clear distinction between how we treat economic development and those goals and policies and our residential goals and policies. So as the person presenting noted, the residential element or chapter, it's to supplement, complement the metro plan. So the metro plan isn't going away, at least as far as we know. And I think that's important to say is, think of the metro plan as still valid and relevant. But because Eugene and Springfield have different urban growth boundaries now, we analyze our population needs differently, whereas before it was all once. So we coordinated everything. So think of it as someone has to say, I meet the comprehensive plan goals and policies in these ways. The metro plan still matters because someone needs to still demonstrate consistency with those goals and policies. But there's a piece in the metro plan chapter that has findings and those aren't relevant anymore. Those don't apply if that was regional at one point and we're now following the state law now or just ability to assess our own population needs, which would mean how many people live here? How many people do we think will live here? And how do we address those needs just in Springfield for housing? The economic development piece, we entirely replaced for the purpose of the metro plan chapter. So someone wouldn't have to go through and think about that and our comprehensive plan. And then I'd say what Springfield's approach has been is get topic by topic together to form a comprehensive plan. Other jurisdictions may wait. I don't know of an example of that right now, but may wait until all of the topics or chapters are ready to adopt and be there all at one time. But our strategy has been let's do something specific to sprinkle while we can. So that's been the process. I'm not sure if that was clear that we had to do something a certain way or not, but that was the decision over the years to go piece by piece and start transitioning to our own. So I think that was everything I had. Thank you.
Thanks, Monica. I just had a quick question. And I was just wondering if you could speak to the ways or if there are any ways in which the comprehensive plan analysis happens cooperatively with the city of Eugene analysis, knowing that the, even though we have a distinct population that are two cities are very dependent on each other. And just wondering in, in what ways that analysis, in what ways analysts work together in analyzing that data?
So I'd say locally, maybe not in the land use planning section, but in our housing team in particular, outside of planning proper titles. Just thinking about affordable housing needs is one example. So how do we give people financial assistance or homeownership assistance specifically, or help nonprofits or developers build more? So that's outside of the realm of land use, but it still happens. And I'd say that looks like many meetings and adopted documents that come together jointly. So there's something there. It can happen project by project, I would say. But as far as housing going into goaltin, what that means for land use, the, it's Portland State now, but we get population forecast data periodically and look at those. We get data for each city, but then also see the counties overall. There are times that we can meet with those staff or understand what the Portland State findings say and have an opportunity to ask questions or say, is this really happening? So I've seen City of Eugene and Springfield look at those jointly. And I don't know honestly what else would go into, say, the residential buildable lands inventory, which will be our next step coming up here pretty soon. But I'd have to look at an example, I'd say of that last report we did from 2011 and see what was factored in. That followed the Springfield's own process. But I just can't remember details about how I'd say like maybe people commuting, coming in. There's another example for economic development chapter. While people may not live here, where do they come from to work here? So I think that's a big one for economic development as well. We have more room to look outside the area. While our inventories are the Springfield specific, how do we provide enough land for employment? It goes beyond where people live sometimes. I don't know if Sandy wanted to add anything popping on, but.
Yeah, I'll say at the basic level that Eugene and Springfield send each other referrals when we have land use applications or amendments going through the process. And so in that sense, we have an opportunity to comment on each other's. And that could be the methodology that they use or the findings that they have. And then the transportation area is another place that we have a lot of coordination between Eugene and Springfield. There, we're both in the metropolitan planning organization. And so that is a federal designation that includes Lynn County, Eugene, Springfield, and actually Coburg as well, because they're close to the metro area. And there is a regional transportation plan for funding purposes for those federal funds. So there's a lot of required coordination because of that federal level of funding, but then it also feeds into the state requirements for transportation funding and planning that. And of course, those systems are crossover a lot. And then like in the Public Facilities and Services Plan, which deals with the water storm, like drinking water, stormwater and waste. I mean, we have a metropolitan wide waste management system. And so that requires coordination. And then the utilities like E-Web has facilities in Springfield, so that also requires coordination. So there's a lot of still overlap that's going to require us to continue to work on a regional basis. So a lot of those are coordinated projects.
Thank you. That's very helpful. All right, and seeing no que, no further questions, just, yeah, want to thank you again, Monica, for answering our questions, for providing that recording and also for your clarification, Sandy. All right, and seeing no further questions, I think we're ready to close that item and move to our next item, which is making findings for a legal legally defensible decision for Christina.
Thank you, Chair. I am sharing my screen now, so please let me know if that doesn't show up well for you.
Looks good.
I'm going to adjust the window so I can actually see more than one of you while I'm screen sharing. I don't know if that will work. So give me a minute. There we go. Okay. So the purpose of this training this evening is to give the commission some training on writing legally defensible findings for land use actions. When you're acting in the capacity of Planning Commission, nearly every decision you make is a land use decision. Your recommendation on the capital improvement plan that you do, I think annually, or maybe every other year, is not a land use decision, but almost every other type of decision that you make is a land use action, land use decision. So this training, I want to give credit to Eugene City Attorney's Office. I adapted this heavily from a city attorney's presentation that they made in 2018 that was phenomenal, and I have been recycling versions of that for a few years now. So the Planning Commission's role in writing legally defensible findings, you know, staff will write a staff report, obviously, that has those draft findings and present it to you in your packet. But ultimately, the content of those findings, when they're adopted in your order approving a decision or in a recommendation to council, those are the way, that's the way that you are speaking to the public, to the applicant about your decision. So while staff write them and bring them forward to you, you know, those are ultimately your work product that you should be, should feel ownership of, should be responsible for, and you should understand, hopefully, what should go into those to make them really quality findings that are legally defensible. So the purpose of findings, I think really the key thing from the perspective of the Planning Commission's important role with the public is that it shows that the, you apply to the criteria, that your final decision was not arbitrary, that you had good reasons for it, and that you considered all of the arguments and the evidence that was presented. I think that's the really, the most important aspect of findings from the perspective of the serving the public. There are also legal, you know, legal bases for findings, legal, legal things that are important that we, that you define ambiguous terms and interpret code if that's relevant. That sets forth the basis for the final decision and it complete, sort of provides a complete record of everything that was considered. If there's an appeal, or even if you're just making a recommendation to city council, there's a record of what you considered in making your decision. The evolution of the findings, sort of how findings get developed is there is applicant, you know, typically there's an applicant and there's an applicant narrative. Sometimes the city is in the position of the applicant. If it's a legislative action, city staff will spend a lot of time sort of gathering relevant information. Otherwise, it's someone coming to the city with their application and the information they think is relevant. Then there's a process to develop a staff report that involves a development review committee, reviewing the application, make sure, making sure it's complete. It has all the minimum required information there to be complete application. And then reviewing the information to make sure not only is there the minimum required to accept it as complete, but actually enough evidence to support fight that the criteria have been met. There may be public comment that submitted in person and testimony to the Planning Commissioner, Commissioner at a hearing or in writing to staff. There may be supplemental information provided by an applicant if there's something that is not fully developed in their original application. And then there are deliberations, which either in a staff decision, the deliberation sort of happen internal to the staff senior planner who's writing, you know, a site plan decision that maybe doesn't reach planning commission. But for planning commission, those deliberations are your public meeting discussions that you have, and then that is followed by your final decision. There are different requirements that apply to findings for quasi judicial and limited land use decisions. And these are like very planner ease, legalese terms, but to remind you, quasi judicial decisions are the types of decisions that you make as a commission where you are looking at generally one applicant or very limited set of applicants. You're making a decision on a permit or an application that's specific to one site. You have to make a decision. You don't sort of like it's on an initiative that applies citywide where the council could just decide not to move forward with it. And then limited land use decisions are a very, are a subset of permits that generally do not reach the Planning Commission unless they're appealed from the staff level decision. So a site plan review decision that's not accompanied by discretionary use approval or some kind of alternatives approval that happens at the staff level are the types of decisions that are limited land use decisions, and those only come to you if the applicant or another interested party wants, wants to have a public hearing and have the opportunity to have you make a decision. So the findings for these kinds of decisions are required by state statute. They must, obviously, they must be written down. They have to explain the criteria and the standards that were relevant to the decision. They must state the facts that were relied upon and rendering the decision, and then they have to justify the, explain sort of the justification for making that decision based on all of those things together. And then legislative decisions, these are, you know, large, typically large planning projects, things that come to you that apply broadly, you know, throughout the city or to large classes of property throughout the city. So examples would be transportation facility plans for an entire transportation facility, such as like the Main Street project, comprehensive plan amendments that are large chunks of the plan, not site specific sort of zoning type changes. Code, the Development Code Update Project is a great example of a legislative decision. There's no statutory requirement for findings for these types of decisions, but Springfield requires findings for all decisions through the Development Code. And that's pretty common that jurisdictions will, will require through their own local provisions that there be findings for legislative decisions. Findings are very valuable in case of an appeal, just to show that the applicable criteria, particularly statewide planning goals, were considered and applied. And it's best practice to use the same structure for these findings as for quasi judicial decisions, even though they're not required by state law. Any questions on those distinctions? I just want to pause and break for questions. I'm just talking at you for the next several minutes. So that one of the most important things that the findings do is it identifies what are the relevant criteria and standards. And there's requirements in quasi judicial decisions and the permit decisions that we provide the public notice of what those relevant criteria and standards are. And then these are sort of the guide, the rest of these bullet points are the guide to kind of best practices for planners on how to structure those when they're writing them, setting out each criteria individually with the relevant findings for that criteria underneath each criteria, breaking down a compound criteria into several parts so that you can see, you know, that each part of that criteria is met. If there are criteria that are explicitly incorporated into other criteria like consistency with these refinement plan policies, then should break down what those also are and show that they're met. If there's a requirement that are not referenced in the code but apply directly due to state law. So for example, the transportation planning rule is not always referenced in our code as applicable to certain types of zone changes, but it is applicable by state law. Those should also be included as criteria and referenced. And then this is a past practice that we are cleaning up and moving away from, but we would previously occasionally reference requirements that would apply separately under the municipal code or under other documents that were not adopted as land use regulations as criteria for that land use decision. Other city regulations may be applicable. Somebody may not be able to actually complete their development until they comply with other processes and get other permits, but those other permits are not actually criteria for the land use decision. And that becomes important when thinking about where, what, what's the timing of people's appeal rights? What are people appealing? So for example, land drainage and alteration permits are required under the municipal code whenever you are going to change the, you know, land pattern. And what, whether you require a development permit or not, you have to get a land drainage and alteration permit for certain types of, you know, earthwork. But it's not necessarily appropriate to condition site plan review on getting a land drainage and alteration permit, just because But it's not necessarily appropriate to condition site plan review on getting a land rate initial alteration permit, just because you. Also need to get that to not violate city code, it's not actually a requirement for site plan review. It's an independent requirement. And that can be relevant to the planning commission as well when there's questions of like federal permits, well, does this require a Army Corps of Engineers, what land permit for this type of development? The answer may be yes, but unless we have a specific code provision that requires that or incorporates that requirement in the development code. It's not relevant to the criteria of approval for the land use decision. I'm ambiguous criteria and interpretations, this is a place where the planning commission can be particularly helpful to staff. In lots of areas of our code. In discretionary decision making, we have terms that could be interpreted to mean different things, things like neighborhood character adverse impact substantial compliance. So as a commission, when you're thinking about what. These terms mean and how you're interpreting them, being able to articulate that so it can be adopted into findings is really helpful, so for example, the planning commission. Defines neighborhood character as the predominant architectural style, height and setback of structures. In the general quarter mile area of a development site, and then you would list facts about whether that particular development. Met that neighborhood character or not by comparing its architectural style, height and setbacks to those other similar, other similar properties. One thing that's important that I'm sure you're well aware of now after going, going through the development code update project. But for housing. Applications in particular, state law prohibits us from applying any ambiguous criteria. All criteria for proposed housing must be clear and objective unless the applicant has specifically opted into a discretionary process. So if there is a criteria under a clear and objective. Path that is not clear, it shouldn't be interpreted as interpreted as an ambiguous criteria, it should just not be applied to that development. And most of those decisions is most of that is happening at the staff level, because generally if something's clear and objective, it's not going to make it up to the planning commission. Reconciling conflicting criteria, this becomes really important when you're looking at comprehensive plan amendments, because there may be comprehensive plan policies. That conflict on a particular point, so is there a code policy that's relevant for addressing the conflicts? If so, follow, you know, that, so for example, a refinement plan policy is more specific than a comprehensive plan. Policy, so generally the more specific plan policy will prevail, and so we'll want to be clear that we're going to use the. Specific refinement plan policy in this case that conflicts with the more general comprehensive plan policy. And if the code of the plans are silent, then. That's the example, the space specific prevails over general. And then you want to explain that in the findings, so that people aren't left wondering why one thing was disregarded. So this is just summarizing from before. A bare opinion or conclusion is not evidence, so for example, the city engineer believes the structure is safe. Is not a fact or evidence relied upon. It's just a bare opinion. Sometimes there'll be like an incorporation of like the city engineers analysis is attached in the record and shows. That the structure will withstand. You know, eight point magnitude earthquake, for example, that would be the type of finding that would be not just a bare opinion. There has to be some analysis. So if there's conflicting evidence. Which I think came up a while back for the planning commission when you were reviewing appeals of the Springfield Utility Board. Transmission facility, there was conflicting evidence about seismic. Seismic risks, I think, and so in that case, it's what's helpful is to explain which evidence the planning commission finds to be more credible than other evidence. And then the findings, generally the legal standard is that the evidence that's in the record to support a conclusion must be substantial, it must be enough evidence that a reasonable person. Would rely upon that evidence to demonstrate the criterion is satisfied. Promises or intentions in the applicant's narrative aren't evidence or part of its proposal, so for example, in a zoning. And you, and you have been through this multiple times, but in a zoning map amendment. Application to change something from commercial to residential, the. The applicant stating, I want to build a, you know, a one bedroom home on this property, that's not. Evidence or criteria of a that can be used to meet criteria of approval, unless you were just specifically. Try to condition that somehow incorporate that into the decision, it wouldn't be binding on the applicant, so it's not evidence. And one of the most common ways that the land use board of appeal strikes down city decisions is for insufficient analysis. Of all of the facts, they call that conclusory findings. Basically findings that skip all the analysis and jump straight to therefore the criteria is met. And here's an, just an example finding criteria under the prior development code, the proposed development must comply with all applicable public and private design and construction standards contained in this code and applicable regulations. We've moved away from very broad criteria like that, but when you have a broad criteria like that, what you would do is then you would break down, okay, here's a specific. Section of code that applies a specific standard in four point four one oh, now it'd be one point one oh five E. At least sixty five percent of each required planning area must be covered with living plant materials within five years of date of installation, the living plant materials must be distributed throughout the required planning area. Planting acceptable per one thousand square feet of required area is as follows, a minimum of two trees, not less than six feet in height that are at least two inches in caliber. At the time of planning, not including root ball, and then below, so you've broken down sort of all of the levels of the criteria, and then under there, there's a finding that said there was. States the required planting for the site is three thousand square feet, therefore, at least six trees that are at least six feet in height are required as part of the site plan. The proposal is consistent with the criteria because four existing twelve foot pine trees will be retained on the site. Along a northern eastern property line and the landscaping plan. Includes planning to additional dogwood trees that are six feet tall, at least two inches in caliber within the front yard landscaping area, so you're explaining specific facts from the application. Where to find that in the record that show why this criteria is met, and you would do that sort of individually for each of these. Each requirement that you have that there is in the code. This is really important, really important for the planning commission, because this is where most of the public engagement around land use decisions happens, it's at the public hearing with the planning commission. So if there are participants that bring in issues or arguments, then particularly quasi judicial. Quasi judicial decisions must address every issue or argument that's raised, that's applicable to a criteria of approval. If something is not applicable or it's an irrelevant argument, then it should state that's not. Relevant to the criteria of approval, so we basically, you're obligated to explain. Why the planning commission either doesn't agree with that argument or insertion assertion, or find something else more persuasive or reliable, or. X, you know, modify your decision to address that issue as well. And then if an argument isn't raised clearly enough to be able to be addressed, then it's important that that's stated, so if somebody sort of vaguely raises an issue. That might be relevant to the criteria of approval if they had brought in more facts to support. Their argument, but they didn't bring in more facts, then. We should be clear around that as well, and that's part of that long winded spiel that I give at the beginning of each. Public hearing about, you know, please, if you have an issue, please raise it with enough specificity that the planning commission knows what the issue is and can't respond to it. If someone hasn't done that, we should be clear in our, in the staff report that's adopted, that they didn't meet that burden. So if a criteria is not satisfied. The first step is to look at whether a condition of approval can be imposed. The city is obligated to impose a condition of approval for any housing development, and then there are a few applications in the code that state that conditions are required. If they can for particular types of development, but generally. The planning commission would be free to deny most non residential development if it doesn't meet the criteria of approval. Springfield's practice has definitely been to allow anything that it can with reasonable conditions of approval. Conditions have to be limited to just what's required in order to meet the criterion, and that requirement must be clear, it can't be. A discretionary deferring that decision of whether the criteria is met to discretionary decision making later. Unless that discretionary decision making is part of another process that has public. Opportunity to respond and notice and all of that, so. You could, for example, defer a finding of compliance from a. Zoning map amendment to a discretionary site plan review later on. But you could not defer a site plan review criteria to a building permit process, because building permits are not discretionary decision making. Conditions of approval must be feasible, if a condition of approval would not be feasible to have it met, then it would not comply with. The Oregon statewide planning laws to to condition it, the proper. Response, there would be just denied the application feasible means that the solution and the condition is possible, likely reasonably certain to succeed. There are a few kinds of conditions that don't need to be shown to be feasible, as long as they're not legally precluded, they're essentially just deemed by sort of by law to be feasible. And those are state agency permit approvals and access easements from adjoining landowners, essentially. Luba sometimes will say, well, you don't need to make a specific feasibility determination for this kind of decision, because that's always feasible. It's pretty limited at this time to permit approvals and access easements. If a conditioner, if a, if a condition imposes a requirement that the developer dedicate land. Or a property interest like an easement. Or pay for something that is off site from their development, like a transportation improvement a block or two away. To mitigate the impacts of their development, then we have a constitutional obligation to ensure that those. Requirements are roughly proportional to the development's impact. And. There's an essential nexus to a government purpose, so that's the Nolan Dolan test, as it's commonly called, the steps are to. Determine how does this condition relate to something that the city has a legitimate interest in requiring, how does the condition relate? To the impact packs of that proposed development, so essentially will the development touch on whatever that city interest is, or is it unrelated to what that city interest is? And then is it roughly proportional to the developments impacts, and then why is this the last opportunity to impose that requirement on the developer? Essentially, this is the, this is the proper time in the development sequence to require that. It, there's a narrow window of exception right now under Oregon law that this analysis is not required if it's a payment for an offsite improvement. That is legislatively adopted and applied without any discretionary decision making, so for example. Minimum street frontage improvement standards that are discretionary, that are non discretionary. Payment of things like systems development charges or permit fees that are applied without sort of discretion on whether they're. You know, the discretion about how much or who pays those. And it's the, this derives from the Fifth Amendment takings clause, the Oregon constitution also has. Relevant provisions about not taking, essentially, it's a prohibition on not taking private property for public use. Taking part of someone's property in exchange for development permission is called an exaction, and it's a type of government taking. Different than eminent domain, but under the same constitutional requirements. So the. Little bit more into like the legal, the legal standard for this, I don't, I don't think you have to get too much into that, because, you know, city attorney's office will definitely be reviewing. Does review conditions of approval to make sure that these requirements are met before applications get to you. But the nexus requirement comes from a case called Nolan versus California Coastal Commission nineteen eighty seven. And then the roughly proportional requirement comes from a case called Dolan versus City of Tigard, and that is Tigard, Oregon. In nineteen ninety four, so Oregon has a very large piece of. Nationwide land use exactions law. The. Analysis has to be individualized to the facts of the situation. It doesn't require precise mathematical equality or any particular mathematical formula, there really aren't like formulas to apply. But you have to make some attempt to show. Rough proportionality in some manner. Public, general public needs or the impact that would be caused by other future developments later on are not material and can't be included in this. Proportional impacts test. So this is just an example of an exaction finding, so there's code language now. That says whatever an existing street of inadequate width is a budding or within a development area that requires development approval, you have to dedicate additional right of way. So this is like the street ought to be twenty feet wide, it's only fifteen feet wide, you're developing on the part of the street that's fifteen feet wide. City standards say you should dedicate five more feet. Can't just say, well, the city standards say you have to dedicate five more feet, so you have to dedicate five more feet. It has to go through the exactions analysis to try to determine. What is roughly proportional to the impact of the development, so in this find. Finding, there's a hypothetical McKenzie Street. This situation has McKenzie Streets, a major collector's street, so. Pretty high capacity, but not at the level of an arterial as a current right of way with a forty two feet and paved curb to curb width of twenty two feet. There's no on street parking proposed, which is relevant to the code in terms of what. The right of way widths are supposed to be, McKenzie Street's an existing street of inadequate width, because it does not comply with a minimum right of way and curb to curb widths. Under the section of code, that minimum. Right of way width is fifty six feet, the minimum curb to curb width is thirty six feet, so there the finding is saying. Exactly why the application does not meet the criteria of approval. So therefore, the application must be conditioned to require the applicant to dedicate and improve an additional fourteen feet. Along the properties McKenzie Street frontage to meet that criteria, and then it goes on to provide that. Analysis specifically, looking at the. The fourteen feet of additional right of way serves a public interest to mitigate the impacts associated with congestion from this development. The development is a partition that creates one new lot and may to be developed with a single family dwelling, which would increase. Trips on that road by nine and a half vehicle trips per day citing the source that came from, looking at the. Property, how much frontage the property has. You can take the whole total square foot area and figure out how about how many square feet that is. Per vehicle trip and then look at the average surrounding area. You know, sort of similarly in the community in that neighborhood. Provides about, you know, a hundred to four hundred square feet per vehicle trip associated with that property, and so therefore. This dedication requirement is roughly proportional to sort of maintaining the same. Impact as compared to the rest of the community. And that is an example of just one way to do the analysis, we have had other examples where we looked at. Mostly often comes up with roads, so we've looked at. Intersection analysis and how many conflict points are created, and so a requirement to dedicate more driveway, more area so that a driveway could be further away from an intersection in order. To mitigate conflict points, there's a lot of different types of analysis that can be done. But it just has to be some attempts to do some math in some way. That shows this is fair, like this, you're, you're causing an impact. That impact is something the city has a role in mitigating, and what we're asking you to do. Is on the same order of magnitude with the impact you're creating, we're not asking you to do an outsized share of. You know, what someone else in the city might be required to do. I've got another example, if anyone wants to read more, you know, into this, the city of Springfield about twenty years ago, set some of the precedent. For the state of Oregon around what's adequate exaction findings by making some. Very good and adequate findings on the one hand that I copied here, and then some very inadequate findings around bicycle. And sidewalk requirements that I think they ended up at that time negotiating a compromise with the property owner. So important lesson from that case is that exaction findings apply not only to dedication of right of way for streets. But also dedications of right of way for sidewalks and bike lanes, it's any property interest that's affected. And then. So this is a best practice that's recommended. It legally, if one criteria is not met and there's no condition of approval or city doesn't want to pose a condition of approval, you can just stop there and say the application's denied. It's really unhelpful for the applicant, for whoever's going to be hearing the decision when it's appealed. To do that, though, so it's not recommended to stop the analysis once you have one unmet criteria, so. Even if one thing's not met and you could deny, you know, criteria is not met, we can deny the permit because criteria is not met, it's really helpful to go through. And decide whether B, C, D, E and F are also met or would be met, and if A is the only problem, or if you've got multiple unmet criteria. And then an ultimate conclusion at the end of. The, either the staff report, or in this case, the planning commission order typically will say, because the application either doesn't. Satisfy all of these requirements, you know, it's denied, or it's. Because the application either doesn't satisfy all of these requirements, you know, it's denied or it's, um. Uh, approved with conditions, it meets the criteria as conditioned. And then there are other important parts of a final decision, um. Which really are, um, mostly important for the chairperson to be aware of when they're signing. That, um, final order, the final decision should include, um, sort of all of the attachments that are referenced. Um, uh, if you have any, um, expert contact or bias, if any items were stricken from the record or officially rejected as irrelevant. Um, then those should be also part of the staff report and referenced there. And that was everything I had. Um, five more minutes left on the work session time. Are there any questions about this? I can go back to any other slides. If there's other topics you'd like training on at some point in the future, let me know. Um, if I don't have an answer on something tonight, I can definitely follow up with you afterward. It's a lot of information.
Oh, thanks, Christina. I think that was really great. Um, I think this is especially important. I, um, knowing that we have a, a new slate of, um, of commissioners coming on and, um. That they'll likely be watching this recording, um, that, um, really I. What I, my biggest takeaway from this is that we really want to be, um, really well versed in the criteria of approval when we're making our deliberations especially. Um, and, um. Really, um, and definitely appreciate how much work it goes into, um, on the staff point. How much staff time goes into, um, determining the criteria of approval, finding, um, legally defensive, defensible findings for us to deliberate. So I think we just a, just a, um, um. Want to, uh, remind commissioners and especially new commissioners, uh, I think we've done a great job of this in the past, but just really, um. Grounding our decision and our, or our deliberations in discussing the criteria of approval specifically. Um, so that if we come to any, um, whatever conclusions that we come to can be found to be, um, defensible and the, the findings can be, um. Written up by staff if they need to be changed as well. Um, and one question that I have, um, around the last slide is just. Um, what, uh, you mean by signature that's needed, um. In this era of, uh, Zoom meetings and virtual, uh, meetings.
Yeah. So the signature of the chairperson on the final order typically the, the planning commission's orders will say. This is what the planning commission adopted. So you'll move as a commission, um, to adopt that order. Um, and then the chairperson will sign that. That can be a digital signature or it can be a wet ink signature. Um, I'm not sure how Sarah does it, but I know sometimes there's like an authorization of, you know, you can authorize sort of by email for. Staff to apply a signature they have on file, which sounds like what, um, maybe what you do, that's. That's allowed as long as there's some, you know, acknowledge that it's the chair's action that is. Causing that signature to be placed, whether it's digitally or, or wet ink is fine. Um, but that final order. Should be signed, um, because that is what triggers the, um, process for providing nailed notice. Um, out to people that there's been a decision and gives them their, like, starts to trigger their appeal rights and the timelines there.
Excellent. Thank you. Do we have any other questions from any of the other commissioners? Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. Last of a co- question, more of a comment, um, as in serving. In this capacity for quite some time now, I do appreciate. This presentation because I think, um. For a while, as you come on as a new planning commissioner and we'll have a couple here soon and then a few more or a couple more. Um, next year, I think it's really important to know from the beginning and, and you did an excellent job, Christina, on explaining this. As to why the staff findings are so lengthy for each piece. Um, uh, over time you would get that as a planning commissioner as you go through and see. But I think outlining the why and how you get there, I think that's really helpful. So then it makes it easier as. Newer planning commissioners are reading through, it doesn't seem daunting and overwhelming. Um, I think that to know that there's a purpose for that. So thank you for that. This presentation was great. Um, and I hope that we have that somewhere accessible online. So then. If I needed to go back for a refresher, that would be helpful, um, and definitely appreciate. Echoing Chair Salazar's comments of, of the work that does go into the findings from staff that is a lot of work. Um, and it does make the decision process a little bit easier for those of us that don't. Live and breathe in the planning world, a hundred percent of our career makes a little bit easier to mitigate and, um, navigate. So thank you for that and thank you for this.
I think that, um, the recording will definitely be on Springfield Oregon speaks and the slides will stay there as well. And I'm sure that, um. There's an easier place to kind of archive training videos that Sarah and Sandy can work that out.
Excellent. Well, um, yeah, again, thank you so much. And, um, seeing no other questions. Um, just wanted, I know we're about at time, uh, to adjourn our work, work session. And I just wanted to check in to see if we'd like to take a, just from the, the, um, other two commissioners, see if you'd like to take a. Quick break between a couple minute breaks, a couple minutes between our, um, work session and regular session, or if we want to just. Power right through and, and finish up the regular session as well.
I wouldn't mind a couple of minutes, but knowing that our next session isn't very long, um, I could defer the decision to the two of you.
You know, I, I could go either way. If, if, uh, Commissioner Bergen would like a couple of minutes, that's fine. Otherwise I, my vote is to. Let's get it done, but, uh, I, I'm. I'm okay either way.
Great. Yeah, I think we can take a couple of minutes if that's okay to start at seven oh five instead of seven. Um, then that case I will adjourn our work session and we will begin our regular session at seven oh five PM. We can get the recording started. Great. Excellent. Um, I hereby open the regular session of the planning commission. Um. Do we need a roll call again, Sandy?
We don't have a change in, um, membership. I was hoping Commissioner Quabell might join us, but he's still not here, so we can just proceed.
Excellent. Thank you. Um, uh, do we have any adjustments to the agenda? All right. In that case, we'll move on to the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. And next we'll move on to approval of the minutes from February fifteenth, um, and July nineteenth of twenty twenty-two. Um, are there any corrections to the minutes as published in the packet? All right, seeing none, um. I hereby approve the minutes from February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two and July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. All right. And next we'll have business from the audience. We will now take business from the audience. This is the time for our. Uh, in our agenda for the public to provide testimony on any topic relevant to the planning commission. I would like to ask members of the audience who are joining us by phone or online to please keep yourselves on mute until, until you are called to provide public testimony. If you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on Zoom or press star nine if joining by phone. If you are here in person, please fill out a request to speak card and present it to the planning commission assistant. When called upon to speak, please state your name and mailing address. Please keep your comments to three minutes. Sarah, do we have anybody, um, in council chambers or Christina, I guess you're in council chambers?
I am Sarah today for this purpose and there is no one in council chambers.
Excellent. And, um, I see no hands and I'm assuming that no one's called in as well.
No other attendance on the, um, participants list either.
All right. In that case, we'll move on to business from the planning commission. Are there any, um, reports of city council meetings? Commissioner Bergen?
Thank you. I had attended the September twelfth. Um, work session. Our city council training, I suppose rather, um, the takeaways that I had, there are a few of them. Um, was that elected officials are now mandatory reporters. There's a whole segment on, um, the child abuse and whatnot. Um. The city council training was actually pretty great. So if you, I would recommend going back and watching that recording. Um, and if there was some really good takeaways, but that was to me the really important piece. Um, then they talked about the overview of the SDC waiver for affordable homeownership. I took several screenshots of that. Um, there was a lot of conversation about what that looks like, whether it's for developers or not. Um, and. Um, of course my screenshots are not coming to me right now. Uh, I don't know if there was actual beyond the work session, um, my link closed on me at the very end of that meeting. So I assume that the meeting was over. I don't know if staff knows. Anything different and I couldn't find an additional link. So I assume that was the one and done for the twelfth.
Right. I can just jump in there and then you can continue, but, um, that. There were two agenda items scheduled, but they only had time to get to the one, um, the SDCs for ADU, uh, not eighties, um, low income housing. Um, that would be for purchase for low income homeowner. Um, and they were, they are going to continue discussing that, um. At a work session in October. So they did give some direction to limit it to eighty percent of area median income and to allow both. For profit and nonprofit developers, but there's some other, um, things that they still need to discuss.
And that was in the work session, correct? That there wasn't an additional meeting after that.
The meeting afterward, which is why it was a different link, was an executive session for CETA and then a CETA meeting, and those are always on separate links. And the, um, regular session CETA meeting was a, um, approval to authorize the city manager to purchase more. Um, properties in the Glenwood Riverfront area for eventual master plan, um, to inclusion in the master plan. Um, process that's underway. And at some point we'll come to the planning commission likely for approval.
Um, question on that, Christina, and I don't know if this is the right platform for that, but do you know, is there a specific, um. Type of property that they're looking at?
The Glenwood Riverfront area is the, um, area that runs from the roaring rapids property on the. Um, that's the property that's the furthest, um. West to Franklin Boulevard on the south and then the river on the north and. Um, east sides. And so there is a. Uh, coalition of private property owners who are interested in participating in joint planning effort. The city CETA owned property there, Homes for Good Housing Agency owns property there. And then there are a few other small parcels. Where the property owners haven't decided whether they want to participate themselves. Be excluded from the master plan as a donut, um, and have to sort of bear all the planning costs to plan their tiny parcels later. Um, or, um, sell their properties to see that. And so this was, uh, approval from the CETA board to purchase three of the, um. Parcels that are sort of in that, had been in that undecided, not sure how they would be incorporated into the master plan. Area. So it's a specific geographic area that would be master planned, but it's negotiations around whether property owners, owners want to sell the CETA or participate directly or none of the others.
Awesome. Thank you for that help.
Yeah. And thanks for that report, Commissioner Bergen. And, um, I know my assignment is for the next, um. Uh, city council meeting, and I believe that that is also this upcoming council meeting is where they'll be hearing, um. Uh, the applicants for, um, the next, uh, group of planning commission, um, positions. So. Um, if you're interested in, in hearing, uh, a little bit from the folks who will be eventually joining us on the commission, um, that'd be a great, um. Uh, meeting to join as well.
And also Sandy is presenting and I'll assist as needed, a session on the climate friendly and equitable communities rules implementation. So two great reasons to tune into that work session if you have time or watch the recording later.
Absolutely. Sounds like it's going to be, uh. Yeah, yeah. Good one for us to, to all join in on. All right, um, and. Next item is, um. All right. And then is there any other business from the planning commission, um? Besides any, uh, city council reports? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to, um, business from the planning. Oh, from the, uh, public development, public works department, sorry.
Sure. And I'll say that I am planning to present specifically to the planning commission on the climate friendly equitable communities. At your October eighteenth meeting. So, uh, we don't have any land use applications. To come before you in October. So we'll go ahead and cancel that October fourth meeting because that will be. Right after the two new commissioners are appointed the night before at the council meeting on the third. So give them a chance to actually. Um, get oriented and not have to immediately start their next day as a commissioner, um. At a meeting. So we'll cancel the October fourth meeting, but then the eighteenth, I will present to you on the climate from the equitable communities. Um, maybe a little bit more of an expanded presentation than what I'm going to give to council because I only have a short time. Next week and the council will also be talking the, about parking. Under climate from the equitable communities at their October tenth meeting. So I'll be able to share. Um, about the parking impacts of the legislation as well at your meeting on the eighteenth. Um, we do have some offers out to some new planners, so, um, I can't. We don't have signed offered letters yet, but, um, it's looking good to be able to fill some of our planning need to be able to staff up for these climate from the equitable communities. Um, but we didn't get every, um, position. With a viable candidate. So we are going to be re-advertising for a senior transportation planner to replace Emma Newman. Um, so whenever that can, our human resources department is really busy. So, um. I'm in the queue for that next position to be re-advertised. So I'm not sure when she's going to be able to get it, um, reposted. But you know, people in transportation that want to come work for us, um, will have a need, uh, soon.
Yeah, definitely. Please let us know, um, either in the next meeting or, uh, by email. Once that position gets posted, so we know to, um, let our networks know about the position.
Sure. So anyway, by the eighteenth, um, hopefully we'll have a couple new planners on board, at least two, maybe even three. We'll see. Um, Christina or Sarah, did you have anything else you want to share with the commission before they sign off for the night?
Nothing else from either of us.
All right.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. I now, uh, adjourn the planning commission regular meeting. Have a great night.
All right. Night, everyone.